May I have a motion to go into executive session?
So move.
Second. There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. So what we'll do is we will jump off of this meeting and jump into the executive session meeting on our calendars. And if any of you see a Mr. Councilmember Cunningham, let him know to jump into the executive session meeting. Thank you.
And a second to return to study session. All those, any opposed? No, all those in favor? Sorry.
Aye.
All of it today. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. What is the council's pleasure for item two?
Mayor, I would ask for a motion that the mayor and council direct the city attorney and the city manager to proceed as discussed in executive session and to settle this notice of claim for the amount of eighty-three thousand one hundred and three dollars.
So moved. Second.
There is a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you so much, Mr. Rankin. I really appreciate it. We move on to study session, item three. Time has been set aside for an update on the COVID-19 emergency. I just wanted to, a couple of things. One, I wanted to make sure that I presented the opportunity for discussion for my colleagues on the council to talk about following on the footsteps of the Pima County Board of Supervisors of repealing our mandatory mask ordinance in the city of Tucson so that we can avoid confusion in terms of what directions are being given at the city level, the county level, and of course, the federal level with the CDC guidelines. And wanted the city manager to lead us in that conversation during this item. Before though, I would like to invite the city manager to give us an update on vaccinations and locations that the city of Tucson is participating with Pima County Health Department, as well as a particular partnership that we have with Tucson Medical Center over at Morris K. Udall Recreation Center. Before I throw the item over to the city manager, I do want to encourage all of our community, those that are ages twelve and up, to go out and get a free vaccine in our community. It is widely available and it is the reason why, and I think we're up in the forties in terms of percentages of population vaccinated here in Pima County. It is the reason why my colleagues on the council and I feel so comfortable with the CDC guidelines in terms of those that are vaccinated to be out and about without a mask. And because of the work that the residents of Tucson put into wearing a mask and taking care of each other as a community is where we are today. So again, I really want to encourage the community to get your vaccine. It's widely available in our community and, you know, wanted to encourage all those twelve and over to get your vaccine. It's very easy to just walk in. So with that, I will hand the mic over to our city manager so that he can lead us in this item. And then after the city manager speaks, we will have our city attorney lead us in the conversation about our mask ordinance. Mr. Manager?
Very good, Mayor. Thank you. And thank you for the encouragement of the community. I know, Mayor, you did your, the PSA with the other mayors in the region. And it is important that everyone not only get vaccinated, but also know we've got plenty of capacity right now. And it's really a shame that we have so much capacity and there are still folks out in the community that have not been vaccinated. So a very quickly update or to update you all on our locations. So we have three locations, El Pueblo, TCC, and Udall, that are city facilities that we're offering vaccinations in one way or through our partners. So very quickly, at El Pueblo, that has gone very, very slow. We've been working with the county. What they are suggesting is that we move that to a mobile pod, which will continue to go into the neighborhoods over in the El Pueblo area, but shutting down the permanent facility just because we're not getting the traffic there. And they think they can drum up more business, if you will, by going into the neighborhood. So that's what they will be doing, I believe, next week. They're going to be getting on that. Just a tidbit on that, we will be using that space for the KidCo program, which will start almost, you know, we finish with the pod and then we'll immediately go into KidCo, so just be aware of that. With regard to TCC.
Mike, what's your timeframe on that? The KidCo program to start?
It'll be, oh, I'm sorry. It'll be right after school lets out. So it'll be the week after next is what we're expecting will be the, and you're talking for the KidCo, sir, is that correct, or the pod?
Yes, sir. When we're implementing KidCo, I have good news. But is that an eight to five or?
So initially, it'll be after school, depending on the overlap. We're still working out some of those details. The bottom line is, is that we are having to mobilize from a pod to KidCo. One of the pieces that's important there is the pod was pretty hard on our floor in the gym. So we're going to have to do some refinishing there. It's not a complaint. It's just a logistics piece, kind of like new paint after you lose a tenant. So we're going down that path, but we're working very closely with our partners at Sunnyside. Unfortunately, they don't have a spot for us, so we're going to continue to go down that path very quickly. I'll get you something more definitive on the schedule for that because some of it will depend on how quickly we can make some of those improvements.
Thank you, Mike. And then the other thing is on the mobilization, the mobile pods, do we have any direction where we're going? I know St. John's was very effective utilizing in that area and also some of the other churches we have in our areas. So let me know if you need me to help you identify some areas.
Mayor, Councilor Februs, I know that Pima County would love the help because they're really trying to identify where to get the biggest bang for the buck on those pods. We know that the St. John's Church was a great location. That was one of our first pods, mobile pods, some time ago, and it was very, very effective. But I also know that they're going to try to move it around in the El Pueblo area. So they'll be going further east, as well as maybe even further to the southwest. So they're going to, they're going to be moving it around. But any ideas or suggestions you have, we certainly pass those along to our partners at the county. Mr. Februs, thank you.
Yeah, just to follow up on that question, we were very concerned that COVID-19, the spread of COVID-19 were attacking some of the ZIP codes or census tracts as Pima County followed those numbers. In terms of ZIP codes, eight-five-seven-zero-six, eight-five-seven-one-three, eight-five-seven-one-four, eight-five-seven-one-nine were ZIP codes that had COVID numbers in alarming levels. Are those the areas as well that Pima County is trying to mobilize vaccine, mobile clinics?
Mayor, yes. Now, keep in mind that what they're really focused on is trying to get into the neighborhoods that have a population because they've been tracking where they've been getting vaccines. And those ZIP codes have not only been the higher area of COVID cases, as you mentioned, but also some of the lowest amount of participation. So the county is really focusing to try to get out there in those neighborhoods. I think you know, Mayor, that we actually changed the hours of El Pueblo, going into the evening to try to drum up more business, and it really didn't work very well. So we're going to hope that by going out to the neighborhoods, we're going to get more people to participate. So what I'll do is get a schedule for you, not only for you, Mayor, but also for the council members. You put it in your newsletters and get the word out, so hopefully we'll get folks out that will take the vaccine.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Moving on to TCC, as I mentioned last time, we are winding down our presence at TCC at the end of this month. I expect by the end of next week, we won't have much of a presence in terms of the city workers. I have suggested to the county that they can utilize TCC through July, and so we're programming for that. A lot of it will just depend on demand. But again, they're finding more value and use out of the mobile unit, so they may shift resources as well. But at least for now, I've authorized them to continue using TCC through the end of July or through July. Also, Udall, as you know, that's a partnership with TMC. They are also seeing a significant decline in vaccinations at that site. We've not heard from them as to what their long-term plans are, but it is highly likely they'll start to think about redeploying some of their resources in different ways to get the vaccine and get the knowledge out that those vaccines are available. Happy to answer questions about those if you have any.
Mr. Ortega, do we have a KidCo side or at Udall?
Mayor, we do not have one at Udall because we're partnering with TUSD. So TUSD has given us some that we're able to utilize during this time. So the overlap wasn't as critical as it is in Pueblo. And the El Pueblo, we have great relationship with Sunnyside, but they have summer school going. And so those facilities that we normally would use are being utilized for their summer school program. TUSD has facilities that are available during the summer, so we're able to seamlessly get into the KidCo programs with, in those facilities.
Alrighty. Any questions from my colleagues?
Mayor, the last thing I'd like to cover is the ARP. I know some of you have asked me about it. We did receive guidance, well, let me rephrase that. We received the draft guidance. We have, there's a sixty-day comment period that the Department of Treasury is requesting anybody have comments. It's a very, very thick document, so we're going through and dissecting that. I suspect that we'll get final guidance within the next month and a half or so. Our application, we had to go through an application process, was submitted on the first day that it was available, which was May tenth. We have not received our money yet, so we'll continue to wait and I'll certainly report that to you post haste. Last item, there was an email that was sent by our housing director, Liz Morales, outlining some of the housing programs. Take a look at that and refer to that. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out to either Liz or myself, and we'd be happy to walk you through that. That's all, Mayor. Happy to answer questions on any of that.
You know, I, like, maybe this question is after the conversation that we have with Mr. Rankin, but I would like for you, Mr. Ortega, to answer what we're planning in terms of mask wearing in city facilities, as well as making city facilities available to the community. I know that we had closed a lot of our counters, a lot of our buildings, so maybe that question is best served until after the conversation on masks with Mr. Rankin.
Okay, happy to answer that, Mayor. After Mr. Rankin, I'll just turn it over to him. He can address the conversation on the mask ordinance.
Alrighty. Councilmember Cunningham, do you have a question on this, or would you like to wait until the presentation from?
No, let's finish the mask conversation, but I have a question specifically related to what you just brought up. And I think it's, 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 it's an interesting subject. There's a lot of nuances to it that I think will be interesting as we.
Okay, go ahead, Mike, and then we'll, we'll open it up for questions from the colleagues.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. First of all, thank you all for the action you took at the prior council meeting, which is on May fourth, at which time you gave me and the city manager and all cities, relevant city staff, the direction to, at all times, interpret and enforce and administer the mask requirements in a manner consistent with CDC guidance, which we could all see was changing over time. And by doing that, it made it so that when the CDC updated its guidance on the thirteenth, that we didn't need to call an emergency meeting to adjust the ordinance, et cetera, we were already in a position to adapt to the changing guidance. So tonight, we have scheduled an ordinance that does, Mayor, what you already described. It would formally repeal the mandates under the ordinance adopted back in June relating to the wearing of face coverings, masks in public places. It would, however, reaffirm the ongoing commitment requirement for mask wearing that still exists on public transit. That's a product of the federal rules. And we discussed that at the last meeting. Currently, that requirement is in place through order of the TSA through, I believe, September thirteenth of 2021. And so, of course, we will continue to remain consistent with the federal requirements on public transit. The ordinance, as presented tonight, also authorizes the manager to have rules and enforce the rules with respect to city facilities, which is what you just started to talk about. And I'm sure those policies will change over time as the guidance changes. But I know he'll tell you that he's going to be implementing rules consistent with Pima County and that remain consistent with CDC guidelines, including as those guidelines change. And finally, the ordinance does two other things. One, it expressly acknowledges that private businesses, establishments, they can still enforce their own rules with respect to requiring people who enter or remain to wear masks, if that is their choice. So this does not prevent them from doing that. And it also urges all Tucson residents to continue to comply with CDC guidance. Mayor, as you explained, that's what has helped us get to the point where that we're at right now. So that's all I have. I'm happy to take any questions.
Councilmember Cunningham, and then Councilmember Februs.
So I, I've, I've heard from some constituents and some different members of the community. And one of the questions we've been talking about is the CDC guidance that people who are vaccinated or double vaccinated need not wear masks for most occasions. There are a couple of exceptions, from what I understand, but it's pretty much, hey, you're good. The problem is, I think that we're running into, is how do you know? And how are we on the honor system? And it's become kind of this discussion of, it's evolving, where we're saying, hey, the folks that are vaccinating and being responsible and taking care of it are basically getting penalized for having to wear a mask because we have other things involved. And that really comes down to some of the big events coming up in the next two weeks, which include, and not limited to, high school graduations, the opening of our, we are hosting regionals in both NCAA baseball and softball. And we are also probably, we are hosting a, well, we aren't hosting, but we are collaborating with three agencies for some high school football game. I don't know what that's about. Just kidding. And then, of course, the TCC, our clients at the TCC, our partners, both the hockey team and the indoor football team, have now these rules. And so the real question is, how do we accommodate the CDC guidelines and the county and our partners so that they have an optimal opportunity? And one of the discussions we had was, what if you had it so if you, if you have a public event, and again, I'm not saying we need to write this into an ordinance. What I'm saying is, I want to kind of get this out in public so people understand what discussions are going on. If you have a public event and you bring your card, or you bring a picture of it on your phone, maybe you can get a wristband or something, and if you... And if you don't have that, then you've got to wear your mask and they can ask you. I mean, and I don't know if we, we may be in violation of the constitution. I mean, there's so many different pieces to it. So what I think we should do is collaborate with the community to find ways to properly help agencies that want to do public events and, uh, community events, um, to help facilitate the safety of all the people attending, both vaccinated and unvaccinated, without penalizing the folks who did get vaccinated.
Councilmember Cunningham, uh, I just wanted to make sure.
Those are the things that I wanted to interject and now I'm here to listen.
Uh, Councilmember Cunningham, I just wanted to make sure that you know that Governor Ducey preempted cities, counties, and towns, uh, from having to require any type of proof of vaccination or as he called it, like a vaccination passport. So, uh, that is something that maybe Mr. Rankin can clarify for me, but, uh, knowing when he did repeal, um, statewide, uh, preemptively, um, any mandatory mask requirements, he did preempt, um, any type of proof, uh, for residents in Arizona to show that they had been vaccinated. Clarify, Rankin.
Is that for, what about for private events and private businesses? Are they allowed to afford? That's my, I guess that's my next question.
Mr. Rankin?
Mayor, uh, Councilmember Cunningham and Mayor and Council. Um, so Mary Wright, uh, the, the, the governor has issued his orders with respect to, just like he did, uh, to try and preempt local authority even to have continuing mask requirements, um, uh, but to not have any regulations requiring the, you know, mask passport or ID, whatever. Um, uh, I, I don't believe, uh, he's put in place, uh, restrictions on, um, uh, private entities in terms of, you know, like a restaurant or a business, um, from, uh, as I mentioned, uh, including their own requirements that, uh, for patronizing their business. Um, but, uh, I know there was some legislation, I'll have to check in with Andreas where it would go, uh, about, uh, restrictions on trying to provide, uh, any type of incentive or any other different type of treatment in providing a service to the public, uh, based on whether someone's gotten a vaccination or not. So we're going to have to see, uh, what has happened with that legislation at this point. Um, Councilmember Cunningham, you are absolutely right. I've been getting calls as well from, um, uh, folks who run music events, um, and saying, hey, you know, we'd like to set it up so that if you're vaccinated, you know, you get this seating here where you don't have to wear a mask. And if you're not vaccinated, well, then you have to sit over here. So the, the, the private organizers, et cetera, are really trying to figure these things out. And one of the keys is going to be our continuing communication and coordination with the Pima County Health Department, um, because, uh, the last guidance I saw from PCHD indicated that the, the thousand people, uh, threshold in terms of, um, where even, uh, vaccinated, fully vaccinated folks, uh, should consider wearing a mask. So, um, I think the best thing we can do is try and continue to get the guidance from the health department that is the local agency that is our resource.
Right, thank you, Mr. Rankin. Mr., uh, Councilmember Feumbrus.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, for both of you, Mike and Mike, what about safety for our staff when they're dealing with the, are they going to be required to wear masks when they're dealing with the public? And then, uh, when Parks and Recs opens up, KidCo, how many can it participate in each session, et cetera? The social distancing, the masking, CDC, and bus, your sat, the transit, our staff on transit, the bus drivers, et cetera? What are they doing? And what's the effective date of the ordinance changes? Are we looking at tonight? When is it going to affect?
What's the date on?
So the ordinance change would become effective immediately?
Immediately after tonight. The clock starts at midnight. Okay. And then the other thing is, uh, we're going to be in compliance with the governor's directions and CDC's?
We'll be in compliance with CDC guidance and we have remained that way. And we've been in compliance with any of the lawful orders of the governor that have been issued at this point.
Okay. And then, well, Mike, please share the KidCo policies and things that we're dealing with, transit with our employees, so make sure your staff. And then the other thing, Mike, Rankin, is that we still have authority over our offices? We could ask, require people to come into our office to do masks or mass?
Piece of it. So we have actually been open for business now for, since I believe it was April fifth. Our public facing counters were open for at least, um, appointments, those kinds of things. So we have been going down that path. More and more of those counters are open and will continue to be, uh, to, to go down that path. So there's two parts to this and as Councilmember Cunningham mentioned, it's very difficult, uh, for us to differentiate someone who has been vaccinated versus someone who is not, particularly from the public. Um, so at this point, as, as, uh, City Attorney Rankin mentioned, uh, my hope is that we will get clear guidance from the Pima County Health Department. Um, at this point, I'm assuming that what we'll probably hear is if staff is going to be dealing with the public, when they're dealing with the public, whether they're vaccinated or not, we may ask them to wear a mask. And I, and I use that loose language because I'm not exactly sure at this point. Um, we're also going to, uh, make.